Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we have a quorum, so I'm going to call this meeting to order in public session. We did have an executive session at six o'clock to get an update on the post, our post Nagog Pond decision. That matter is now back in land court and we were just discussing what we're going to do next. The first item on our agenda is always is citizens' concerns. Any issue that is not on our agenda, anybody can come up to the mic and address.
Thank you. I am Kim Castens of 294 Pope Road, and I would like to provide an addition, so since we're talking about Nagog Pond, I have an additional piece of information in follow-up to the November 20th hearing. So at that hearing, I presented findings from the U.S. Geological Survey Reservoir Modeling of the Firm Yield for Nagog Pond. Firm yield is a rate of water withdrawal. If you withdraw water at a rate faster than the firm yield, the reservoir will fail in a drought. In other words, the level of the reservoir will be drawn down to the intake pipe. Firm yield, okay, so in addition to the published USGS findings, I also presented additional modeling results done by Dr. Sarah Levin, lead author of the USGS Report on Refinement and Evaluation of the Massachusetts Firm Yield Estimator Model from version 2.0. So she's from the New England Water Science Center. So I didn't have any previous personal or professional interactions with Dr. Levin. I wrote to her and asked her a series of questions about her 2011 report, and then I followed up with a phone call, but I didn't know her previously. So after I spoke, Ellen Cathcart, the superintendent of Concord's Water and Sewer Division, spoke in rebuttal. He pointed out that Concord had provided data that went into the USGS modeling report. He pointed out some limitations of modeling. And he concluded his comments by saying, and I went back and got his exact comments from the videotape because I wanted to make sure that I really understood what he had said. So he said, with respect to the firm yield model, he said, "I would probably pay that same person there," meaning at the US Geological Survey. "I don't have a friend there who can run the model, but we'll do the analysis to ensure that we can manage that resource." I just find it a bit insulting to say that that's how Concord intends to operate, meaning that Concord wouldn't operate in a highly responsible, science-based way. But I actually have the documents from Concord's registration and permit, and I went back to them after that night. And the new information that I'd like to share tonight is that in 1997, Concord received from Mass DEP a water withdrawal permit, and it specified seven different spots from which they would withdraw water, and Nagog was one of the seven. And for six of the seven, the maximum daily rate of withdrawal was specified, the number of a million gallons per day that they could withdraw from six of those seven spots was specified. But for Nagog, there was just an asterisk asterisk, which brought you down to a special condition noting, "The department has agreed to delay the requirement that you run a safe field study of the Nagog Pond reservoir until the software necessary to run the department's guidance document for estimating the firm yield of a surface water reserve supply system in Massachusetts is developed. The department will require that you complete the safe field study within one year of the delivery of the software to Concord. The department will forward this software to you when it becomes available." So then go forward to 2001. Concord received from Mass DEP a registration statement for water withdrawal and water registration. And this 2001 document noted, "In Special Condition Number Five of your permit," referring to the previous document that I quoted a minute ago, "the department stated that a safe field study of Nagog Pond would be required to be completed within one year of the necessary software being provided to Concord. The department is hereby notifying you that the software of 'estimating the firm yield of a surface water supply system in Massachusetts' is now available on the Internet." And then they gave the URL. So my inference from what Mr. Cathcart said on November 20th is that Concord has not, still not, done the firm yield modeling for Nagog Pond that Mass DEP told them to do in 2001. And they had planned their water treatment expansion without this essential boundary condition, without doing this essential piece of modeling that they had been told to do with respect to their permit. So to my eye, this is not the behavior of an organization that can be trusted, to be a good steward of this valuable regional resource. So I understand from Chairman Dashi that the issue is moving into a new phase, and I just encourage you, as we move into this new phase, to be, you know, to be appropriately skeptical, you know, not to just trust that everything that they say is necessarily 100% that, you know, the truth and nothing but the truth. Verify what they say, put in appropriate checks and balances, and make sure, you know, that what we're getting here. So I know that, you know, it's possible to view this as a zoning squabble, but Concord's not seeing it that way. Concord is fighting a water war. You know, the reason they're putting this tremendous effort and, you know, hemorrhaging these legal fees on this is because, not because they want to build a building, it's because they want the water. So I'm just encouraging you to, you know, go into this eyes wide open and not, you know, assume that we can count on their neighborly goodwill to protect our best interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Castens. Anybody else in the audience? Issues that are not on the agenda?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I attended the West Acton sewer meeting the other night, and I apologize if I was a little concerned about things. I thought I saw them going a certain way, and I may have misunderstood, so I came to get clarification. It's my understanding that the committee would be looking at the data to determine if there is an actual technical need for sewers before they engage in a program to sell sewers. Is that correct?
Their charge is that they're supposed to be studying the feasibility of searing in West Acton. The CWRMP is obviously the study that has served as the underlayment for the prior searing effort and then the effort earlier to unsuccessfully expand the sewer district. And, but we are, you know, we're not, there's a limit to how basic the committee's going to get, but part of the responsibility of the committee is to talk about, you know, alternatives to searing, too. That's come up. I think that it's not just going to be, but yes, you came into the meeting and you made assumptions, and you were rather frankly disrespectful toward the consultant there in asking, kind of asking some of the members of the committee, who were they, and what is their association with the sewer district or the proposed sewer district. So I appreciate your coming here and sort of clarifying that you might have misunderstood, but it is, you know, these are, this is a group of people who are, you know, are, I think they're aiming to do the same thing. They're not in a rush to sell sewers. But, you know, and that's why it's, you know, there was a potential timeline that was much more, would have been much more ambitious. And I think that we all agree that they need more time to do a lot of analysis. Right now, we're still doing background, you know, historical, and then about engineering issues, challenges, and then the financing piece. And then we're going to have to go back and start going through all that with a much more fine-toothed comb and talk about what we have, but anyhow.
Thank you. My concern was that the, so as a chair, I would hope you would, and this is what part was missing, as far as I was concerned, that as an observer, the, it looked like the agenda was to sell the sewers, but what I realized afterwards is that the consultant has a vested interest in selling the sewers, but the town doesn't necessarily have an interest, vested interest in selling the sewers. So that, I think...
Well, I would beg to differ. The consultant works for the town, so, you know, the consultant is going to do, the consultant is, yeah, actually in a better position to judge the wisdom of sewers or not than a lot of laypeople are. It happens that on the committee, we have a couple of civil engineers, one of whom was dealing with the South Acton searing proposal, and the other of whom actually works in wastewater management searing anyhow, so.
Yeah, okay. My only point was that if the consultant tends, is, makes millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars, they do have a vested interest if they then are in a position to bid on the project. So that was my only point, is that as the chair, I was hoping, I would hope in the future that when somebody that does have a vested interest, that that's announced ahead of time. But that's not my only concern here. I was going to ask a couple of...
Consultants also, you know, do other things besides just sort of sell searing. They're providing services.
Well, they sell consulting services.
And there are lots of, there are a lot, no, there are lots of people who are working as consultants who sell services. I've heard you refer to yourself as a consultant. I would assume that you would like to be paid for some of those services, and that you might be insulted if people question your, whether you really earn them or not.
Well, actually, if I was selling services to the town or had a hope of selling services to the town, I would announce ahead of time that I had a vested interest in such a decision. So Nagog, is my understanding that there was a report to the judge, or is going to be a report to the judge?
There was, there was a status conference.
Okay, with the judge?
Yeah, just to report on what happened, basically the decision on November 27.
Yes. I was concerned, this is my citizens' concern, that the report to the judge told both sides of the story, that, you know, there were people that were very pro to approve the application, and there were two that weren't, and I was hoping that the judge heard both sides of that story.
Yes. That was, it's publicly available. I think that, I think that the decision, which is, it's basically a zoning, you know, it's a permitting decision, it's a revised permitting, well, it's, it's not, it's, it's in the form of a traditional permitting decision, but it just reports about what happened at our meeting in a formal way. So the town planner and council worked on the formatting and the language, but there was an explanation of why the two dissenting members voted as they did, so.
Great, thank you very much. The next one is a question. The SJC case about the church windows, who is paying for all the legal fees on our side? Are we doing that all ourselves?
Mr. Manager, I don't know.
We are.
Because it's my understanding that it's like hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is that coming out of the general budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing is just an announcement, because as part of, as a member of Green Acton's Land Use Committee, I've been starting to do calculations of covering footprints for various public policies and actions that the town is doing as a way to help us get excited. And the Acton Power Choice has the green option that you choose, which costs a little bit more. And according to my calculations, that for every household that chooses the green power choice, it's like taking your car off the road, a single car. So if you want to take a car off the road, choose the green power choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Citizens' concerns? All right, 7:10 PM, we have a hearing. Under MGO 140, Section 58, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on December 18, 2017, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of Alpha Cars and Yural of New England for Class One Auto Dealers License at 178 Great Road, Acton, Mass. 01720. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is there anybody here for Alpha Cars? Yes, sir. If you'd like, you can come to the podium, and the mic is already on. We do have your application. If you want to, if you just want to summarize what you're seeking here, or add to the description, that's fine. Otherwise, if, you know, we can, we can easily talk about your application without more information. But if there's something, you want to introduce yourself and...
My name is Dimitri Bykovsky, and I started Alpha Cars in the early 90s in Cambridge, Massachusetts. We moved to Boggsboro in late 90s. We've been in Boggsboro ever since. And some of you, if you drive on Route 111 in Boggsboro, you would see Alpha Cars building near town center. It's not a huge town center in Boggsboro, but it's there. So we were granted permission to build Alpha Cars showroom location in Acton on Route 2A. And I have a couple of renderings that I don't think you have there, the digital, if I can approach to just quickly show you, so you'd get an idea what type of building we're referring to, if that's important.
No, I think we have. There was a sketch in our packet that showed locations for cars and bicycles.
And motorcycles.
Oh, motor, okay, that's bikes, okay, that's what bikes, I thought, this is interesting. It's cars and bicycles. We're accustomed to thinking about bikes and bike racks, so that's what I...
Sure.
Okay, so you're, you're using the cool term for motorcycles, okay?
Yes. There's a bicycle shop adjacent to this.
But, so you're talking about something other than this?
This is just, yeah, this is just a digital image of what the building will be. It is being constructed, built now.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, in the site where Van Ash Flowers used to be. It's a very big, I've seen the steel frame, I guess, framework, and now it's starting to get covered up, so.
Yes. So if you let me, I'll show you what it would look like. I know you're here as public servants. Thank you very much for doing what you're doing. I forgot to mention that. Thank you. So this is the building, and we have to get your permission in order to get the license to sell. Class One is to sell new motor vehicles, which is motorcycles with sidecars that we sell in Boggsboro. And the Class Two is to sell pre-owned vehicles, cars and motorcycles.
I mean, I don't, you're just looking for a license from us. You're already building the building, so you've already been, obviously, to the building department and got your building permit and zoning clearances and all you needed to build a building. Okay.
Yes, and they actually, I'm very thankful to them, because they contribute to the looks of the building. Our original plan, type of the building, was not how it looks. And they said, "Well, how about if you do it similar to what you have in Boggsboro," which we changed, and I'm glad we did it, because that was the right thought. Surprised I didn't come up with that.
Let me just ask you this one question, as much for my own information as everything but, as anything, but there are lots of car dealers in town. They're clearly good businesses. They're welcome in town. But what I've been hearing through a lot of education that's going on is self-drive cars are coming. Within the next five to 10 years, there's going to be a third of the vehicles on the road now that are there, because everybody's going to have these self-drive cars. They'll all be car pools. They'll pick up five people, deliver them, take your kids to school in the morning, come back and pick you up and take you where you want to go. So what do you see as a future of the new and used car business? Have you thought about that at all?
That's a very wide question. So for the purposes of this, I don't think that's going to happen.
I mean, you don't have to answer the question. It has nothing to do with the license, so it's just kind of off the topic completely and taking up the board's time, so we don't need to go into it for 10 minutes, but...
But a quick, my 10-second opinion would be that it's going to be a little while before, like you said, everybody will be on electric, on electricity. I think you're right. In three to five years, there's going to be a huge number of those, and the industry will have to, already changing. But there's still going to be niche markets, so motorcycles are not going electric anytime soon, even though there are some prototypes. And then there is vintage car market, which we, we do a lot of those, so they're going to stay the way they are with the engines. But it's going to be interesting in the next five to 10 years.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Comments? Katie?
I have one question, also kind of a little bit from my just knowledge, because I, maybe they're a motorcycle seller, but that you're a licensed agent of the Urbit Motorworks? Is that a motorcycle?
Yep. Urbit Motorworks is a, is a U.S.-owned company, which is located in Russia.
Oh, okay.
The factory was originally Russian military factory, and U.S. business team purchased it in 2003.
Okay. And then are you planning that you primarily work here? Are you planning to hire folks? And if so, do you have an estimate of how many people you kind of plan to hire to work at the dealership?
Mm-hmm. So this location is going to be a showroom for our Boggsboro location.
Okay.
So this is going to be just to display and show motor vehicles, conduct business of selling. Vehicle service still will take place in Boggsboro. We have excellent service facility there. So we will, most likely, there will be one or two people working at that location.
Okay, great, excellent. Well, otherwise, thank you and welcome to town.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ching Sun? No? No? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve the application for second.
Okay, Ching Sun moves, and Peter seconds. Any comments, questions from the audience before we vote? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have scheduled the town manager's budget presentation at 7:15, but I do know Susan Mitchell Hart is here, and she's the first item under Selectmen's business. I don't know, Susan, if you'd like to go earlier, because the town manager advised me that he does not want to stop in the middle to have you step up. So we could take you first, and then you wouldn't have to sit through the rest of our meeting if you chose not to.
Janet, thank you very much. Our treasurer, sorry.
And I should warn you that you have a presentation to make, and that I have a response on behalf of the board. It's a letter that I put together, and then anyhow.
Oh, thank you. This is Hart, the letter, Acton Conservation Trust treasurer, and he will make the official check presentation. So thank you very much. For anyone out in cable TV land who doesn't know that, know too much about land trusts, we're a nonprofit, non-governmental organization devoted to the preservation of open space in Acton. Our members include 300 individuals and families. As a land trust, we can hold permanent conservation easements, accept gifts of land, purchase land for conservation purposes, and accept tax-deductible gifts to be used for open space preservation. We actively look for opportunities to assist the town in achieving these objectives, and 161 Newtown Road is an excellent example. We are delighted to make the gift to the Board of Selectmen of $32,300. The gift is to be applied to the costs of acquiring lots one and three at 161 Newtown Road. A fundraising effort that campaigned for Grassy Pond was launched by the Acton Conservation Trust to help offset the use of free cash for this purchase, and our goal was $30,000, which we happily exceeded. The amount was donated by 70 residents and includes a leadership pledge made by a member of the Acton Conservation Trust to match all donations up to the amount of $15,000. ACT is delighted to make this gift on behalf of these donors and all of us who consider the project a vital addition to open space preservation in Acton. Thank you. It's the letter to go with it.
We're supposed to be more ceremonial about this.
We're a photographer.
This is great. No, now, you can, you may go back to the podium, and I need to address you, but shall we circulate the chat? This is, this is, Mr. Town Manager?
I guess she's coming.
Oh. All right. Okay, yeah, well, let me hold, okay, but let me respond. Dear Susan, this is a letter, I'll hand it to you. We have a big fat envelope for it, but anyhow. The Board of Selectmen is profoundly grateful to the Acton Conservation Trust for its generous gift of $32,300, which will apply toward the purchase by the town of Acton of open space lots one and, is it two, three? Three. Three. Let me fix that. I'll fix that. At 161 Newtown Road, two weeks ago, on December 4th, Acton Special Town Meeting approved by an overwhelming vote the proposed purchase of the Newtown Road property for $800,000. $770,000 was to come out of the town's Community Preservation Open Space Set-Aside Fund, and the remaining $30,000 from the town's free cash, as you mentioned. By the time of the Special Town Meeting vote, ACT not only had launched its campaign for Grassy Pond, but remarkably had raised more than $30,000 in private donations. The 10.9 acre property has been highly ranked on the prioritized parcel list of the Acton Open Space and Recreation Plan, encompasses a wealth of natural resources and wildlife habitat, includes nearly one-fourth of the Grassy Pond shore. The property also is an important link in Acton's so-called Admiral Necklace, connecting and providing a continuous wildlife corridor and hiking and other passive recreation opportunities between the town's Bulet Conservation Land and Nagog Hill Conservation Land. Sincere thanks to ACT, ACT, and the many individuals who made ACT's gift possible and have helped to protect a very special and important open space parcel, so. Thank you, Janet. But I'm, should we? I'm going to have to...
There, I guess so.
Manager, you are up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is my last budget presentation ever.
You sound awfully happy about that.
Frank Sinatra's birthday was the other day, and I was just listening to some of his music. But this is, as you all know, I just finished my 40th year as a, as a local government manager, and FY19, this budget I'm presenting tonight will be my, my last, and I've been, you know, spending a lot of time reflecting on my 40 years, thinking about all the great board members, staff, citizens I've, I've enjoyed working with over that time. And in fact, at night, if I have insomnia and I can't go to sleep, I, like people count sheep, I count board members. And I usually, somewhere in the middle of my 12 years of Williamstown, I tend to fall asleep. So it does work, but just, I always look for a quote, and some of you may wonder who Ernie Harwell is. Ernie was the voice of the Detroit Tigers for about 50 years, and he retired in his last broadcast. He did say these words, "It's time to say goodbye, but I think goodbyes are sad, and I'd much rather say hello, hello to a new adventure." And I will be embarking on that in about six months. Before we talk a little about the budget, I think it's important to talk about some of the things we are working on and accomplishing in this current fiscal year. As you are aware, we are, we have embarked upon a capital planning initiative through, and have started a capital improvement planning committee. We implemented electric aggregation for our citizens. We provided additional tax relief for our seniors. We've implemented advanced life support and paramedic services. We've implemented advanced, advanced life support and paramedic services through our fire department. We moved all our human service agencies into Thirty Sudbury Road, that is now known as the Human Service and Senior Center. Uh, we've continued to work on tax incentives to attract, uh, the appropriate businesses to town, such as, uh, uh, the, uh, Insulet Corporation that is under construction now on, on Nagog. We've maintained our AAA bond rating, something I'm very proud of, the only community I've ever worked in where we're able to, uh, obtain that. We've commenced our complete street program. We continued both our rail trails and, uh, continued our transportation, uh, program. So, it seems like, over the last several years, it almost is like the budget cycle is really a twelve, a twelve-month cycle. We started working on the FY nineteen budget back in August, asked our departments, uh, to submit their, uh, operational and capital requests. Uh, as we usually do, we have a, um, I guess it's an institution now, we call it the Hill, where we spend two days reviewing budgets, uh, all, all the departments make their presentations, uh, uh, to me and, and the other, other town staff. So when we did this, this past September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, we had, uh, between operational capital and personal, personnel requests, over forty-four million dollars of requests. And, uh, we go through a priority system using the electronic clickers, kind of like what we did at town meeting, to come up with some priority lists. After we finished the Hill, I have been using for the last ten years, because I do believe in, in team approach, our, our budget, what we call our Budget Book Working Group, that consists, in addition to myself, the Assistant Town Manager, the Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director, uh, the humans, the, the Human, uh, uh, Resource Director, um, uh, the Town Accountant, and, uh, the former police chief, who, as everybody knows, had a lot of experience. So even though he's retired, he has lent his expertise to this group. So, uh, we meet every Thursday religiously, starting in early October till right through town meeting now, to not only review budgets, uh, for them to give me some guidance and thoughts, and finally to formulate the budget and then monitor the budget as we move forward through town meeting. So, whoops, sorry, too quick on the trigger here. Uh, so the result of all that process is a recommended, um, FY nineteen budget that sees an operational budget increase of two point five four percent. Subsidies, which we'll talk about in a little bit, of up about eleven percent. And capital, a lot more emphasis on capital in this budget, of about ninety-six percent. So our whole budget of thirty-four million, seven twenty-nine thirty-eight is at exactly three percent, which, as you may recall, is what was recommended in the Finance Committee's point of view. Whoops, this thing's very sensitive. So some of the, some of the features of this new budget is we're gonna commence design of a North Acton Fire Station. We'll continue our contribution to OPEB. We will continue our work on senior tax relief. We will do final design of the traffic issues in Acton Center. Implement our complete street improvement program. Continue initiatives in Kelly's Corner, replace Fire Engine Twenty-Two. Also do HVAC improvements at both the West and South Fire Stations. You may recall, in this current budget, we did, we did the Central Fire Station. We're adding a full-time human service and senior center receptionist. There was a halftime position slotted, and with all the new activities over there, just a halftime is not, not enough. Adding a maintenance position in the, in the Municipal Properties Department, because once again, with the added, uh, space that's required over, uh, to be maintained over Thirty Sudbury and other issues, it just, just seemed like we needed, needed more help there. Uh, we'll purchase a utility train vehicle for fire emergencies, which will come out of the Ambulance Enterprise Fund. This is kind of our typical slide. No surprise, it shows that most of our revenues are property taxes at ninety point two percent, with excise taxes coming in second at three point six. And local receipts at one point eight, state aid at one point seven percent, and historically, reserves at two point seven. And this is FY eighteen, because as you all know, the ALG processes has not necessarily finalized some of these issues for FY nineteen. Uh, and, uh, if we look at our municipal budget by function, and these are the FY nineteen, this is, is based on the FY nineteen. Uh, numbers, uh, Finance Department leads, leads at thirty-six percent, Public Safety is twenty-six percent, Public Works at fourteen, uh, and pretty much everybody else is around four or five percent between Human Services, IT, Library, Town Manager. And you may ask, why is the Finance Department bigger than Police and Fire? Uh, and that's primarily because, uh, housed within the finance budgets are all the health insurances, the property casualty insurances, the, uh, the retirement assessment from the Middlesex Retirement System, et cetera. So it's just not the normal operations of finance. It's all those other things as well. And this basically by object shows that, uh, as, as we've, all know, that we're pretty much a people service. So seventy-three percent of our budget is based on personnel, and that really should be, uh, no huge surprise to folks. So, uh, go, since mainly the, a lot of the issues in this recommended budget are gonna be capital oriented, I thought I'd walk through some of the capital. Coming out of General Fund is a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the MBTA train whistle ban. We have enjoyed a tr- a train whistle ban, that's hard to say, twain, twain, train whistle ban, uh, for a number of years. But, uh, uh, in order to continue the train whistle ban, we are gonna probably have to do a lot of infrastructure work. We have six, uh, street crossings on, on, on the train line. So a hundred and forty thousand will be either creating some signalization at some of these crossings, maybe some of these kind of meridians, uh, to direct cars. And, and that is really gonna be necessary if, in fact, we want to continue the train whistle ban. Whatever our plans are, will have to be approved not only by, uh, the MBTA, but by the, the, the feds as well. We also are gonna have our share of, uh, a bike share program, which, uh, uh, will be, uh, located, presumably somewhere around, uh, Gardner Playground. We'll have to work out that with the Historic District Commission, and then also at the rail trail. The rest of our capital, uh, that I'll be going through in a, in a minute, uh, will have about, uh, will be bonding it, and the first year's bonding cost will be about a hundred thousand dollars. So, it's just a picture of what we might have to do for a whistle ban on, on some of our, uh, some of our streets. And the bike share program, you've seen some of these in cities. Lexington has this program going now. Maynard has signed up. I think Concord's thinking about it, and it gives the ability for somebody to rent a bike, take it from point to point, uh, drop it off at another station. Sometime in January, I forget which meeting it's going to be, Kristen Gichard of the Planning Department is gonna talk more about the bike share program. It is a matching, uh, program that there are several businesses. It's basically eighteen thousand a year. Uh, we're appropriating or recommending nine thousand. Uh, we have a couple of private sources that will be putting in nine thousand as well. In terms of, as I mentioned, doing some bonding, uh, we have, uh, design for the North Acton Fire Station in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is about fifteen percent, or is fifteen percent, of, uh, uh, an estimated five million dollar project. We have two, uh, appropriations from Kelly's Corner. One is, uh, uh, to do, uh, we, we are running into some potential, uh, overruns in the, in the current money that was appropriated at town meeting, primarily because of, of looking at realignment of Charter Road, signalization of, uh, of Commerce Way and things like that. So that's estimated, um, to be s- three hundred and thirty-ish thousand dollars. The other element that's in, in the Kelly's Corner Initiative is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, um, uh, do appraisal services for, uh, about, I think, thirty-seven easements that'll be required to implement the Kelly's Corner project. So that's just for the appraisal. It does not pay for the easements. That would have to come to a future town meeting. Acton Center Design, I think you may remember last year, Corey York gave a presentation. We now have the recommendations on, on what to do, and this would be the implementation of, of, uh, trying to improve traffic in, in, in the town center. Uh, replacement of Engine Twenty-Two at seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, and keeping up with our ongoing replacement of, of fire equipment. Three hundred thousand dollars for the Complete Street Improvement Program. This is about five years' worth of, of, uh, complete street improvements that also were identified in a study we did this past year, that, that look at everything from integrating, um, uh, you know, bike lanes and things like that, to pedestrian issues, et cetera. And then HVAC improvements at both fire stations at two hundred thousand each. So our total, uh, recommended capital for bonding, uh, through the General Fund is just a little over three million dollars. And, uh, just as we're talking about bonding, this, uh, slide shows you how our principal balance is, is going down dramatically. Uh, the blue is excluded debt under proposition two and a half, and the red is non-excluded. So as you can see, in, in three or four years, we're gonna be virtually debt-free. So it is a good time to start thinking about, um, some of these, some of these projects to, to fund through, through debt service. Uh, we also have capitals from other sources and other budgets. Uh, I did mention the utility train vehicle. This is a vehicle that can, um, go off-road, go in, in the woods and trails on our conservation lands, bike trail, et cetera. And our proposal would be to take that out of the Ambulance Enterprise Fund for forty-one thousand. Uh, we have an upgrade to our fire alarm network over at the Dispatch Center, uh, Vision is the name of the company, uh, for forty-eight thousand. And then coming out of the Sewer Enterprise Fund, a comprehensive sewer plant evaluation. It's, uh, the sewer plant is getting close to twenty years. It, it's kind of doing a capital plan for that, for the sewer plant, and that is a hundred and ninety thousand. So that's the UTV. The yellow thing is not a surfboard. It's a, it's a, it's a stretcher. So that gives us a lot of flexibility where, uh, this vehicle can get to places where our, uh, other public safety vehi- vehicles cannot. Uh, we are having a couple, uh, General Fund subsidies to our Enterprise Fund, Ambulance Enterprise, at two hundred and forty-three thousand. We spent the, the fund balance down pretty well in ambulances past year. Uh, we are also being somewhat cautious, because this is our first year of ALS, and we're just really starting to get a feel for the revenues and what, what that is like. And transportation, as, as we've talked about before, between our shuttles, our dial-a-ride, our, our, uh, fixed route system and, um, and Crosstown Connect, we've been, uh, doing a General Fund subsidy of about two hundred and thirty-five thousand the past few years. OPEB is something that's always, uh, on a lot of folks' mind, and that's our, uh, uh, our obligation for health insurance, et cetera, for our retirees. And as you recall, we have been pretty aggressive on that, putting aside about six hundred thousand dollars a year, plus we've created an OPEB factor for new, new positions that we create at town meetings, so that we can make new positions basically neutral on its impact, uh, on OPEB. So, uh, unfortunately, this, uh, this is the OPEB valuation as of December thirty-first, twenty-fourteen. Uh, we should be getting any day our, our new evaluation. We do that every two years. But presumably, the curve will look pretty much the same, or hopefully maybe even a little better. So, pretty much by twenty thirty-five, if all things go the way they've been going, our unfunded liability of OPEB will be, uh, will be virtually gone. Union contracts, as the Board knows, we have five union contracts. Four contracts will be expiring at the end of this fiscal year, June thirty, twenty-eighteen, and those being Patrol, uh, in the Police Department, Superiors in the Police Department, Dispatch, and AFSMI, which is basically our Public Works Department. Fire, uh, is, uh, uh, under contract till FY nineteen. So, um, at this point, uh, under, under most of our contracts, usually, uh, around January first, the unions will write us a letter with their, uh, indication of their willingness to bargain. And, um, we'll be, um, presumably moving forward on, on those as well. I've always used this quote, and I really, I really love this quote, but it, it's from the Athenian Code. And, uh, hopefully, as I, I reflect on my time in Acton and, and my time in general in municipal service, uh, I always liked the last line, "We will transmit the city not only less, but greater, better, and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us." And I hope I've done my small part to make, make Acton a, a better place to be. And as Mahatma once said, "There are no goodbyes for us. Wherever you are, you will always be in my heart." And I'm ready to ride off in the sunset like Shane. Be happy to answer any questions. And we'll be having Budget Saturday, uh, January sixth. You have a, basically a hard copy of the budget in front of you. The, the budget will be online tomorrow morning under DocuShare with a table of contents and a little easier to maneuver around than maybe looking at the hard copy. But be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I don't know whether we should break down and cry, because all the, all these sad sort of, uh, sweet goodbyes. But anyhow, um, yeah, I certainly can vouch for the fact that I've enjoyed working with you for seven years while I've been on the Board. But, uh, any questions or comments from Board members? No?
I'll say this, I mean, you know, we'll get into any real discussion and details, um, at Budget Saturday, and, and we still have six months of you to do a lot more goodbyes. But, you know, just wanna say a quick thank you right now. Um, you know, I think a lot of people take for granted how collaborative and transparent the Acton budgeting process is, and that's not true in most communities. You know, it's, it's not necessarily like this, and, and that's due to, to your leadership and example. So, just a thank you, um, you know, you've put together what seems like, uh, a really responsible and responsive budget to our town's needs, um, the Board's kind of priorities, uh, that we set out last year, and, uh, and, and considerations of, um, the realities of our budget situation. So, I look forward to doing the detailed talk at, uh, at Budget Saturday, and I'm sure we'll have questions for all of the individual, uh, uh, department heads and, and that kind of thing. But otherwise, um, thank you very much, and, uh, congrats on your final budget presentation.
Thank you.
Comments, questions from anybody else on the Board? Okay, any questions, comments from the audience? Please, uh, you can share the mic with our gleefully departing Town Manager.
Uh, this is Kim Gaston, two ninety-four Pope Road. And I just wanted to, um, know how you handle legal expenses, 'cause you've got the stained glass windows, and I'm sure you didn't expect to spend so much money on Nagog, and it, you know, it seems as though this would completely just potentially blow your budget to, um, have unexpected legal costs in a given year. So how do you cope with that?
Well, I've been criticized by, uh, some that I have a legal budget that's too high. So that's how I cope with it. We've kind of, traditionally, it's very interesting with this town, because since I started, the town's been in a lot of litigations, more than any other town I've ever worked in. So, we kinda, I don't wanna say we build in a litigation factor, but, but, uh, you know, we're certainly aware that some things take multi-years, uh, to get through the cycle and things like that. And the other issue is, is that, unlike a lot of towns, um, uh, the, the municipal budget is, is a bottom-line budget, like the school budget. So, uh, I have the ability to move money around, uh, in the, in the course of the year. If, uh, something comes up that's a crisis, or we need to find more legal money and things like that. So I have a lot more flexibility than other managers in other towns do in regards to that.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I just, let me just add quickly to that, because when Steve says he can move money around, that sounds easy to do. But that means he's gotta keep the entire overall budget within the, the bottom line. So if he has three hundred thousand dollars more in legal costs, he saves three hundred thousand dollars in other accounts so that he can move money into that account, and he's been excellent at that. So, in fact, traditionally, the town, um, turns money back at the end of the year because of good budget control.
Yes.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. And I just wanna thank Steve also, well, um, not just for the legal stuff, but in general, you've been very transparent and fair. There's not a lot of politics in the way that you do things, and I really appreciate that. Relative to the budget, um, what was very interesting when Steve arrived is we started to find out how much money was there relative to actuals. So if you have three positions that are open, but they're not filled, then that budget is not being spent. And so those actuals are at the leisure. is not being spent, and so those actuals are at the leisure of the Town Manager. And I think Steve's been really transparent about what's available and offering options on what can be done. Also, I'm very much in favor of using a certain percentage of money for litigation every year. I wasn't. When I first arrived on the scene, I was along the same traditional lines of, you know, stay out of court. And I remember going to one of these selectmen conferences, and I sat and had lunch with a selectman from Concord, and I said, you know, "How is it that you get what you want out of these developers?" And she said, "Well, we have a percentage of money in the budget for legal costs, and we're not afraid to use it, and they know it. You only have to do it once or twice, and you start to be known as somebody who's going to be strong about what you want." And so for me, I'm okay with the legal funds, and I appreciate our effort relative to the CPA case at least. Sometimes a town has to stand up for our rights and go all the way, and I'm fine with that. I had questions, though, about the budget, if I may continue. So we've been talking about getting an HDC FTE, or half an FTE, for over 10 years now, and I want to ask if there's anything in there to assist the very important and state legislated commission that still has no staff support.
There isn't, no.
So at some point, I hope the Board of Selectmen will ask that that actually moves forward, because again, the developers seem to get more and more FTEs for processing applications faster and faster, and the HDC doesn't have anybody to help get what we want. The Traffic Center, excuse me, the Acton Center Traffic Improvements, is that what was approved by everybody, or is there a change? Because there was threatened about a rotary and stoplights and all that stuff.
There's no change, no.
So we had like a soft sell that changes.
Right, yeah, this is more the implementation of that.
And then the North Acton Fire Station, if you're doing design, does that mean that there's been a location? I don't remember anybody choosing a location.
Well, we did have a consultant from a company called Municipal Resource, a retired fire chief, that looked at a lot of our properties, and his recommendation was the property we own on Harris Street, old fisheries and oil life.
Thank you, I'm in favor of that site. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the audience?
I just want to say a quick thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you have done in terms of facilitating the town's acquisition of at least six or seven major land purchases using CPA funds. I knew you were the Town Manager for us once I heard that you helped facilitate Westford's purchase of the Bay State Camps. East Boston Camps is what I meant to say. And I hope we find someone who's half as good as you are, or three-quarters, or I'm hoping for 100% as good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's actually, the line equity stuff's part of the fun, the fun part. East Boston Camp was actually, I think that was the biggest CPA purchase at the time, 13 and a half million dollars.
Okay, any other comments, questions from the audience? All right, and no other comments, questions from the board? Mr. Manager, you're free to stay with us for the rest of our agenda, but thank you very much. Can we endorse it over? Yeah, it's in there, yeah. Oh, gee. How many dinners are you buying? All right, also, we've done with the budget. Okay, so back to selectmen's business, we have a vote on the access easement agreement for 161 Newtown Road. We just need to vote to approve the agreement.
So moved.
Ching Sung moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, and I assume we have something to sign. All right, and that leaves us with the consent agenda. Item four is committee appointment for Annie Osmond, full member Transportation Advisory Committee. Item five is committee appointment Maria Crowley, full member Historic District Commission.
Hold.
Five, who's holding? Me. Holding, okay, Katie, okay. Item six, committee appointment Karen Martin, full member Dog Park Committee. Item seven, credit request building department, I'm going to hold that one. Item eight, accept gift Recreation Department, gift totaling $50 from Pat and Peter Johnson to be used for funding a new recreational facility and playground at Jones Field. Item nine, accept gift Recreation Department, a gift of $6,000 from Donald and Supermarket to support the July 4th fireworks. Item 10, accept gift Recreation Department totaling $1,500 from Seacrist and Bloom LLC to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 11, gift Recreation Department totaling $100 from Angsu Global for funding of the new skate plaza at TJ O'Grady Skate Park. Item 12, accept gift Recreation Department totaling $2,500 from Cambridge Savings Bank to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 13, one-day alcoholic beverage license Jing Jing Tong, January 14, 2018, Nagog Woods Clubhouse. Item 14, request for extension of operating hours via Mexicano, December 31, 2017. Item 15, request to dispose of obsolete items at the Memorial Library. Item 16, meeting minutes November 13, 2027, 29, and December 11, 2017.
Yeah, I want to hold November 13, please.
Okay, hold, okay, November. Why don't we, if we're going to go through these, okay, let's talk, why don't we talk about the held items and see if we can clear them? Katie, you held number five.
Yeah, there was a note from the VCC that they had concerns about Maria's potential conflict of interest, just because she sells properties in town, and asked how we were resolving that, and I didn't see a note as to how that was resolved.
Okay, well, so I spoke with her, and we already have another real estate agent on the HDC, and the bar that I was using, which I believe Maria met fully, was sort of a bar of attitude and understanding that the purpose of the HDC is fundamentally to as much as possible preserve, you know, these properties as they're intended to. And she very much has expressed and very clear interest in these historic properties and in maintaining them as is. And so I don't really think there's a conflict of interest there, in addition to the fact that her business, as far as her selling property business, is not really her primary line of work, and so I don't anticipate that there is an issue there.
I just want something on the record, there wasn't anything on the record.
Yeah, that's fine, that's my mistake, sorry.
And then I held item seven, Mr. Manager, and I talked about this. It's a request for a special arrangement for refund of building fees. That is contrary to the usual practice, which is to refund any excess. This particular developer wants us to have an account set up to hold it. I think Town Manager and I agree that that's kind of messy. It's just neater to just refund the fees than stick with the standard practice, so. And then Peter, meeting minutes November 13.
I just had some changes that I thought should be made to the November 13 minutes. I didn't have time to mark it up, so I'm asking that it be pulled, and I'll communicate with Lisa and get those changes to you, and we'll bring them back.
Okay, well, why don't we?
Should we take a separate?
Prove all but number 16, and then we'll just deal with number 16 separately, just leaving?
Should we do a separate vote on number seven? Because right now it's for the credit request versus having a vote to actually just refund the?
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I would do that. I mean, I don't like the idea of holding something in credit for somebody.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So why don't we do all the things that aren't a problem, and then we'll deal with number seven and number 16 separately?
So I'll move to approve consent agenda, items four through six, and eight through 15.
Second.
Who's seconded?
I think Ching Sung.
Ching Sung's seconded. Katie moves, and Ching Sung seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining.
All right, and then I'll move to approve a refund of the building permit per request, but not a credit on number seven.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Peter's seconded. Katie moves, and Peter seconded. Any further discussion on item seven? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. And then finally, item 16, we just want to hold all of the minutes except for November 13, we can approve, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 20, 27, 29, and December 11.
Second. Katie moves, and Joan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Ching Sung moves, and Peter seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas and whatever, or whatever holiday you pick, and I guess we'll see everybody, well, some of you I'll see in a week or so, but.
New Year.
New Year, yeah.
Oh, I'll see you all.
Some of, yeah.